We are now live.
Good evening. We're going to call this meeting of the Finance and Operations Subcommittee to order. It looks like it is 6:03 PM. And our first order of business is approval of minutes, I believe. So do I have a motion?
I'm out.
And I will second. We'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Saros?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. That is two to nothing approved. Dr. Hackett, do you mind putting up the agenda?
I, I.
Thank you, sir. And while we're waiting for Dr. Hackett to bring that up, so I know we discussed the last Finance and Operations meeting at the school committee meeting on Monday. This evening, as we normally do in our budget process, we'll begin to look at a high-level look at the different numbers that we roll up for the first maintenance of effort, as we call it, which would be basically how we, how we would see the budget with contractual increases and other things that would roll into fiscal year 2022. That's the first look we take. So we'll, we'll talk about that this evening and then we have a couple of other things on the agenda as well. So, Dr. Hackett? I think you were trying to put the agenda up, but I don't.
No, that was actually, I appreciate you buying me some time.
Okay.
Here we go. Let me know when you can see it. I can make it a little bit bigger, too.
Yeah, that would be great for, for the older people in the crowd here.
Me, one of them.
That's great. Okay, and I guess I jumped ahead of us. So, the next item on the agenda is an update on school safety and security consultant, RFQ.
Actually, I let Carla take that, to the extent that she can. Andrew was going to be here this evening, but we had to have do a last-minute change. You'll notice we're using the mayor's office Zoom account this evening. There is a meeting of the South Middle School of Butters, the neighborhood meeting going on that's using our account, and Andrew's actually hosting that meeting. So, he is not in attendance. We will bring it back to you, but Carla, I don't know if you want to speak to any of this or not.
Yeah, um.
Thank you.
Sorry, February 12th, the, the RFP was, we had to have everyone's application in for their plan for the security assessment of all the schools plus Colbert and some other ancillary buildings in Braintree. We then met on, I think, the 18th. Karen and I met and did our assessment alone. We picked, there were four different categories that we had to do. I don't know if I can, I can't share my screen, but there was an assessment that we had to go through for each company. There were eight companies that applied for the school security assessment, and we, I got it all written down. Good Harbor, Techmark was chosen. Contracting is ongoing with the insurance paperwork going on right now with Andrew. Then it goes off to the town where they're gonna sign, and then hopefully we can start on April 12th and the final assessment potentially in July. And it, it was actually kind of interesting to see how a company is chosen in, you know, the non-advantageous, advantageous, and then there were companies from all over the country that applied, and we ended up, Good Harbor, Techmark is actually from Norwell. So it's really convenient that they're close, and yeah, we're excited to get this process rolling.
Thank you, Ms. Saros. Any, any questions? Comments?
I, I would just thank the group. I mean, I know Andrew, like always, just puts an incredible amount of effort and is just a great resource, but also Carla and Karen, who have really kind of spearheaded and co-led the, the group, and of course, we have several administrators, including Mr. Lee involved as well. But, you know, they've put a lot of time in, I think, very thoughtful about the process, and I would just echo what Carla just said, and it's pretty, it is exciting to be at this point, to really be able to kind of kick it off with what we said we were going to do, and candidly, that's a pretty short period of time, given everything else that's been going on that we're, that we're at this point to be able to do this, so.
Thank you, Dr. Hackett. I would say the same thing. I would echo your comments. Thank the group that has worked so hard on this. Also thank the town. I, you know, I think the, the vote that gave us the appropriation for this really makes this possible, and, you know, we're, we're happy to be moving forward so quickly, and, you know, again, I thank all those that have been involved. Okay, so the next thing is administrative updates. Doctor, do you have some updates for us?
Yeah, I just thought I would just briefly touch on, as you know, we, we've, we've gone full day, five days a week at the high school, starting Monday. We've had, I think, really a pretty solid four days, and I say that with some trepidation, because tomorrow is still in the play and things could fall apart, but we, you know, and we've had some glitches along the way. I, I think, I know you are as school committee members from, you know of the tech issues we've had, that's been, we've been working really hard with Bell, that's, you know, it's kind of been on Bell's end, because we get our internet from them, but we are, it is, is definitely our issue. Thankfully, as of this afternoon, they've just done a great job working within, our tech team has done a great job working together to kind of figure out what the problem was, so that it has been isolated and identified. We are anticipating, you know, stable internet service tomorrow, as well as next week, and the problem will continue to be worked on, but you know, that, that did cause some issues for us yesterday and today. I, you know, I just want to thank parents who've, and staff who've been patient and kind of were able to roll with it a little bit, and you know, it's not easy, as, as, as you know, to, in this age where everything is in the cloud and everything's on our computers, and we've been doing so much around remote learning and, you know, synchronous instruction that when, when things don't go well and the technology doesn't cooperate, it's a, it's a major, it's a major challenge. So, but again, I think we've had a really good, solid week. I know the kids were, were, I, I know they were glad to be back full, full-time, all day. I think overall, things went very well. Administrators have just done a tremendous job, just, you know, with the logistics of it all. So, so it'd be good to have a full week under, under our belts as of tomorrow. For the, at the middle school and elementary school, just to brief, you know, again, high-level update, Mr. Lee and the principals and the directors have been working hard on schedules. We feel that we're really in very good shape that way. We still have logistical issues that we're working through. We know the identified space issues that we, that have been challenged, that are going to be a challenge for us, but we, we are confident that we have, really have good solutions for those. And we are, again, going to be at six feet at lunches, as we have, we have discussed, and then we will be no less than three feet for the elementary, middle school level to start on April 5th. We will, obviously, where we can get more distance, we'll take more distance. But we have, we've already gone through the classrooms. This principal's done a tremendous job working the logistics of each room, lunches and all the rest of it. So, you know, again, by just way of a high-level kind of update, you know, I, we're, we're, I think we're making great progress. We are hopeful that we will be providing expanded transportation, well, expanded, a transportation for the high school, grades nine through 12. As of the 29th, we were really kind of trying to target the 22nd, but it's, it's been complicated with this, the routing and the times of the middle school and elementary school. We do want, we did want to start that earlier than when we go to the full days at the middle school and elementary school, to kind of give it a dry run. Parents have been receiving surveys, and we've been getting, collecting information. We still have capacity issues, so the, the, kind of the final question is of the kids we have with us now and of the kids who are indicating that they want to return, where do we need to kind of draw the, draw the marker on mileage away from the school to make sure that we're going to have enough space for, for the kids to ride? We're hopeful that it will be more than two miles, which is, I think will be very helpful for, for a lot of students and families. If we could, obviously, if we could go closer than that, we would, but it really does come down to how many seats do we have on each individual run? You know, we want to make sure that we, when we say you can have a seat on the bus, that we can guarantee that to be true. So, we are going to kind of take students through a registration process, which is a little bit new, but it's also something that we will carry over into next year. Just so, you know, we make sure that we, we know how many kids we, that need a run, we can be a little bit more efficient with it. So, parents could look for more information on that. We will do our, our BPS update this, this weekend or on Monday, and then to, we'll, we'll put, but we'll put the information out on, on the high school transportation tomorrow, because we had said that 22nd was a possibility. So, we'll, we'll get that information out. So, happy to answer any questions, and certainly Jim can answer any questions if you have some that are a little bit more detailed, but you know, I just want to make sure that I provide you a little bit of an update.
Oh, thank you, Dr. Hackett. I appreciate it. And, you know, I, I think it, it goes without saying that we're very proud of the work that our staff, Dr. Hackett, you, and Mr. Lee, and all the administrative team did to make Monday a reality. I know that, you know, there was a lot of trepidation on a lot of, a lot of fronts about it, but I'm so pleased that we were able to get the high school students back fully and, you know, see a path to the other middle, the elementary and middle school in a couple of weeks. So, you know, we, we can't say enough about the way our staff pulled together. I know these are, as we've all talked about, difficult times, but I think that, you know, everyone working together made Monday and, you know, most of this week happen. And of course, you know, as luck would have it, we had to have a little, you know, a little bump in the road with the internet today, but, you know, all in all, I know the feedback from everyone has been so positive. You know, you can't, you, you can't solve every problem that would have come up to, you know, and we got back to full opening, but I think that, you know, the work that was done, was done really well to get us to the position that we're, we're in at the high school, and I, I know we'll have the same success when we get to the elementary and middle school. So, much appreciated. And thank everyone again. So, any other comments or questions?
To the chair.
Ms. Saros?
Yeah, I just want to thank you again for all of your work, all the teachers for their work in getting this done. It's been a tough go, but it's, you know, we can do it, and thank you to the staff and administration for getting this done. And keep plugging along.
Thank you, Ms. Saros. Any other questions? Okay. Next item on the agenda is that we're going to review the DESI Competitive Grant under the Student Opportunity Act, and Dr. Hackett, is that from you?
I will turn that over to Mr. Lee.
Okay, Mr. Lee.
Dr. Hackett. Thank you, Mr. Kukoros. So, just more of an update in terms of where we are in the competitive grant process under the Student Opportunity Act. As you know, from the last school committee meeting, this act was passed, actually, back in January of last year, and plans had to be submitted by every district outlining your approach to how you would help close equity gaps that exist for some of our student populations. Given COVID, some of those deadlines were extended. We submitted our plan back in June, which you guys have seen and are reviewing, and we'll talk more about it at the next meeting. However, because we did submit our, our plan under the Student Opportunity Act, we become eligible for some of the competitive grants that they have made available, and most recently, in fact, a couple of weeks ago, they began a grant process where they are releasing approximately $5 million of, of grant money in a competitive nature to schools that had submitted their student opportunity plans. So, we are pursuing, under that umbrella, three of, of the areas that we think we're going to be very competitive within. And I'll, and I'll just talk a little bit about each place. So, there are five areas that you could apply for a grant under this funding. One was for accelerated summer academies. Two was for a summer learning program. Three was for diversification of the workforce. Four was early college, I think in terms of dual enrollment programming. And the last one was early literacy. So, given where we stand as a district, we felt that the accelerated summer academy, the summer learning program in the early literacy were the areas that we could present the most compelling argument as to why we should receive some grant funding. Under the accelerated academy, we are looking to mirror, you may or may not be familiar with, it's called the Calculus Project, and it is an effort to get populations that are typically not getting to advanced levels of mathematics in high school actively engaged so that they can become in those more advanced classes up to and including calculus. And the Calculus Project is a nonprofit that's nationwide, and their approach is what we will mirror, and, and that is to get to the kids while they're still of middle school age. So, we would be targeting, would be eighth graders and ninth graders to bring them in for summer, a four-week summer course that they would take right before the school year began with four hours of math instruction a day to, to really give them a preview of some of the advanced mathematical concepts they'll experience in class with the intent that they will become more competent, more comfortable in that environment, more successful in that environment. Some of the program also includes what they consider to be pride lessons, which highlights some of the accomplishments of people of color and some other minority groups in their, their work in STEM fields with, again, an eye towards encouraging students to, to look at this field of study as something that they can flourish in. And again, through this program, get those kids best prepared for coursework in the fall. The other piece of it that we would do is, in essence, pod some of these kids into the same sections of mathematics classes so that they have familiar faces and peers that they can relate with within the rooms, again, with the hope of making them more comfortable and more engaged in their learning. So, again, it's a four-week program. We see it as a stepping stone if we are in the, the appropriate position to, to really roll this out over a five-year period of time to really increase the rate of which some of our students participate in advanced mathematics all the way up to calculus. So that's the first grant that we'd be applying for under this. The second one is the Summer Learning Program. And again, this, this is supposed to be more of an engagement-type program that emphasizes remediation. And in this, we are targeting our EL population, our students of color, our low-income families. And what we would seek to do is tie ourselves to the SPARC program, which I think you're all familiar with, so that kids, in essence, would be taking SPARC types and Richmond courses, but at the same time, receiving direct instruction from our teachers in mathematics, in English, in literacy specifically, to try to remediate some of the lost learning from this past year, and again, set them up for the best chance of success going into next year. So this is 100 hours of instruction over the course of the summer. This program would, in, in essence, run for the month of July. Again, we would collaborate with the SPARC program, and with this funding, help to expand that program so that they can handle additional numbers that we might provide. And again, it's an opportunity for us to address the needs of students who have really struggled during the pandemic and, and really put them in the best position for the first day of school moving forward. So that's the second grant under which we would be applying. And then the last one is, is under early literacy, and under early literacy, part of what the, the grant requires is that you adopt a new literacy screener, and we were already looking at moving to the Dibbles Eight, which is one of their acceptable screener programs. So, we would look for this grant to help us fund not only the acquisition of, of that, but also all the professional development that goes along with it. As you all know, as a district at the elementary, we have been working towards the workshop model as it relates to writing and mathematics, but more recently towards reading. And we see opportunity within this grant to be able to get additional materials that our classroom teachers need to fully implement the workshop model up to and including classroom library sets, which had been an impediment for us as a district. And it might be a little bit of a stretch, but we, we have promised that we can get this within the grant and ideally be able to fund those classroom libraries across the, the district, which would really be a giant leap forward for the workshop model reading program that we have begun to implement. So, we have to submit these, these grants on March 26th. We're in pretty good shape. We'll certainly hit that deadline. I think we'll have most of these grants completed by early next week. We'll get them in, we'll, we'll see how we fare against the competition, but happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Any questions?
No.
All right. And I think this, these are wonderful opportunities. I appreciate you giving us an overview, and hopefully we will, we will be competitive and we will get some of the grant money to continue the great work that, that we do in our school system. So, thank you, Mr. Lee. Okay, the next thing is the FY22 Budget Development. And Dr. Hackett, are you gonna?
I will.
Share an overview first?
Just one second here.
Sure. And again, while Dr. Hackett is bringing that up, just, just for those that aren't familiar with the budget process, we always start here with a look at the maintenance of effort. I know, again, there was some, some news earlier in the week that the town's budget is a little bit challenged. And, you know, as we've learned through budget seasons, we will, you know, we will continue to look, and I'm sure the town will get better financial updates, as I heard from the council meeting the other night from our legislators as well. So, you know, we're hopeful that as we go through our process, we'll have a better picture of where the challenges are and, and what part of that we need to be involved in. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Hackett.
Thank you, Mr. Kukoros. Good evening, everybody. Just to not, I, I don't want to, I want to manage your expectations in terms of what you're going to see tonight. This is going to be quite brief. We have been, and that should, that is not a reflection of how much work has been going on, because we have been working very hard in our office. Mr. Kukoros, this point, there are just a lot of unknowns right now, particularly around funding, revenue sources from the state and federal level. I think, you know, the town has, has a very good handle on what's happening at the town level, and, and not surprisingly, local revenues dealing with anything that's been impacted by the pandemic are down. And that is part of the challenge that not only Braintree faces, but I certainly, I think you don't have to look too far to see other schools in towns that are, that are going through the same issue. We do not know yet or have a good handle on exactly what the federal funding would look like to the school department specifically. We will be receiving our own grant allocations from the federal government. It's, it, you know, we, we think we have an idea, but it's, it's been, the information has not been flowing to us quickly, I think because it's, but it has to go through several levels, including, you know, the state level. So, more information should be made available to us relatively shortly on what the funding will be for, that's coming directly to us, not, not to the town, but directly to us, and what those funds will be, be able to be used for. So, with that, I always, we always kind of start with a little bit of a look at our enrollment. It's clearly a little bit different this year. We know that we've lost some, some students to homeschooling. We've lost some school, students to private schools. So, as we go through the budget process, one of the things that we really try to identify first is what do our class sizes and sections look like across the board, K through 12? You know, some good news is that we are experiencing a shift in the, the bubble, as we have called it, which has now reached, just made its way into the high school. And we are, we do have some ability to make some reductions in some elementary and potentially middle school, but certainly in elementary school sections, which we, to this point, are confident we can do through attrition. We have, we'll talk a little bit later about just some of the retirements we have. We obviously always try to take advantage of those where we can. This, this is kind of, we've been, you know, it's been a bit of a challenge because our, our enrollment has been not, it's been kind of, it's been, the bubble's been going through. We've had, you know, kind of stable growth, not a lot of growth, but we've not been able to reduce a lot of sections system-wide, which is one way that we can help to reduce expenditures or shift resources throughout the school system. So, this is, I always, I just think this is an important table to show just because, you know, we are a definitely a changing community. We're changing demographic within our school department. It's interesting to just go back to 97, 98 and, and kind of see where we were then in terms of the makeup of our student body. And, you know, you can look at the races and see where, where the growth has been and where the changes have been. So, and, you know, with, with that, we've, we continue to work hard to make sure that we're providing the appropriate instruction to the, to the students that we have in front of us and the supports that they need. You know, making curriculum changes that are, are adaptive to different cultures that are within our schools. And also, we have, as you know, well over 40 different languages that are spoken with the Braintree School Department. And we do provide English language learning services for those students to make sure that they can access instruction. Here are the numbers and, in terms of where our, our English language learners are by school. These are students for whom English is not their first language, and you can kind of just see where the populations are and the growth that we've seen just since 1516 from 228 to 332 as of, as of, I believe this was October data, October 20 data. So, you know, they, the, the, the challenges in terms of resources and, and the distribution of our resources is, is real for us, because while 332 students is, is a significant, fairly significant population, they, the, the population is clearly spread out, as you would expect, across the school system. So, trying to figure out how to be as efficient as we can with our people to provide the services becomes a little bit of a challenge with, you know, your sharing staff between buildings. And this is just a comparison with the state. Our enrollment receiving Yale services versus state, and then our percentage of students who, for whom English is not their first language versus the state. And I will obviously read the chart to you, but you can go down and, and see, you know, how we compare statewide. You know, we are still obviously under the state averages as we might expect, but we are certainly getting closer to those averages every single year. So, every year, we like to talk about our accomplishments. You know, this year should be no different, even though it has been a very different year for us. Just kind of a retrospective of what we've been able to do over the last several years in, with our budget and, and really trying to expand program and meet the needs of all learners. The 2018 FY18 budget was primarily a, a year where we really tried to address social-emotional. We had NEAS with us that year, which was an expensive process for them to do their visitation. We also created an ABLE's classroom, because we have a shifting population of students who are in the ABLE's program going from elementary to, to the middle level. And we also really tried to and had to pick up our translation and interpretation services to the earlier demographic slides so that we made sure that all of our vital documents were translated. I, I lose track of the number of languages. I believe it's five or six now. Mr. Lee can correct me later if, if that's not close. And we had some enrollment-driven adjustments that we needed to make in staffing. We needed to add as we recognized that the bubble was moving in through the middle school at that point in time. In FY19, we had some, again, some additional special education, special services additions that we needed to make for programmatically, both based on enrollment within those programs, but also different needs that were emerging throughout the school system. As you know, we offer a tremendous slate of programs for, for students with special needs across the district. And this, as you can see, just, we were adding to, for the most part, adding to those programs. We were also in this year able to add a high school guidance counselor, which was, really helped us. It brought us down into the, the. We were also in this year able to add a high school guidance counselor, which was, um, really helped us. It brought us down into the, the, um, recommended caseload. Or get us, got us closer to it certainly, uh, for the high school. We were, we were understaffed at that point. Um, and we were also a, a, able to add a science teacher, biology teacher, uh, based on enrollment. And then in FY twenty, uh, seems like forever ago, uh, we added some additional nursing services that certainly have, uh, served us very well this year. We would be lost without um, the nurses that we have, um, and the, the job that they've done from, from beginning to where we are right now through this pandemic. Um, we made some additional, um, adjustments and we actually added, uh, a, a sped transition coordinator position, which, uh, la- launched the launch program that is on, on Pond Street, uh, which has been a tremendous, uh, tremendous program for our students and just, uh, fantastic staff doing great work with kids who are, who have really kind of aged out of, uh, our traditional high school program and they're working on tris- transitional skills to, to, uh, into adulthood. Um, and then we made some additional enrollment driven, um, position changes. And in this year, we added a facilities manager, which, uh, also has been critical for us as we've gone through the years, uh, with the, with the building projects, but also this year, um, Chris McNamara, who serves in that position. Uh, has been just a tremendous, uh, help and worker and coordinator for the work that had to be done to our HVAC systems. Uh, deployment of, uh, HEPA filters, uh, and then just the ongoing maintenance issues that we run into with facilities that, um, that are aged, um, in need of, uh, pretty regular attention. FY twenty-one, um, was the opening, um, of East. Uh, we added, uh, some positions, um, at East, uh, particularly, especially within, uh, administrative and guidance. Um, uh, we also had a, um, some non-instructural software that we put in place, assets essential, which is the, the facility student, uh, program that we're using. And we also got hit with a, uh, insurance, a fairly costly insurance increase on school, uh, buses in that year. So the total adds in FY twenty-one, uh, beyond just the maintenance of effort budget were a little over half a million dollars. So with that, um, here is where we currently are for FY twenty-two. Uh, just a reminder that the FY twenty-one budget, the budget we're in right now is a total budget of seventy-three million, two hundred and eighteen thousand, nine hundred and two dollars. Uh, we started this process, um, and you have not, we have, this was obviously the internal work that we have done. Our, just our straight maintenance of effort rollover budget year over year, uh, was seventy-six million, six fifty-nine, one fifty-two, which is a three point four million dollar increase or a four point seven percent. So that budget represents us just taking our, our contracts, um, employment contracts from, uh, steps and lanes. Uh, to the percentage increases that have been negotiated and rolling them forward into next year. It really does not do much more than that in terms of adjustments for, um, enrollment or it certainly does not add program. Uh, but it is our first real number, um, that means something to us in terms of, of being able to maintain next year, what we're currently doing this year. We do make special education adjustments, including, uh, district placement tuitions. Um, and again, that budget came in at four point seven. Since that point, we have, uh, taken another, uh, we've taken many runs at this. Um, we, you know, we have, we've made more progress than what we're showing here internally, but we're not prepared to talk about that really publicly right now because there's, you know, there's still a lot of work to be done and we want to make sure that, uh, when we bring, um, an additional budget forward or a, a more refined budget than, than this one forward. That, uh, we, uh, we want to make sure that everything is in accurate, obviously. Um, and that we have thought through all, all the implications of, of, um, what we're, what we're presenting to you. But right now we have a preliminary budget. Uh, that is a seventy-five million ninety-nine. It is, uh, two point seven million versus three point four and, uh, represents about a percentage point less than our maintenance of effort budget, uh, which is three point seven. So it's three point seven eight is where it's at. Uh, just to kind of show you, these are, these are, yeah, I want to say in quotations, these are easier adjustments to make for us. Uh, these are not cuts to any staff. Um, we are able to eliminate five, uh, elementary positions based on, uh, the enrollment shifts that we're seeing. Uh, and we're able to handle those through attrition. We have, so we have several retirements at the elementary level that we're, we are able to, um, take advantage of, of not filling. Um, which obviously when you have retirements and you have to, you have to, uh, refill the position, there's a, you know, there's a cost to that. Um, and that's what you see, um, with, uh, the next line, the additional retirements that we're anticipating. About three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar reduction that those positions actually will need to be replaced based on current enrollment, based on how we have designed the program at this point. So, but the net savings is still three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Uh, so all told, between those two, um, adjustments, we've been able to reduce six hundred and seventy thousand dollars to this point. And again, um, you know, that we have, we have a, a lot more work to do. Um, but we are, um, and we've done a lot more internally, which we will be rolling out to you, uh, in the coming, uh, coming weeks. So happy to answer any questions. We have, uh, Ed Cronin, Director of Finance and Operations on the line with us as well as Lisa, uh, Freely, who is the assistant, uh, for finance. Um, and, and of course you all know, with no need of induction of Jim Lee, who can, who's also been, uh, involved in this process as he is every year. So with that, Mr. Chair, we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Hackett. Uh, any questions from the committee?
Nope.
Okay. Seeing none. Um, just a couple of comments, um, and maybe a question. First of all, thanks for all, all the effort. I know, um, this has been probably one of the most challenging years to put together a budget, um, and, you know, I know COVID's been used multiple times in conversations over the last couple of weeks, but I think it's, you know, it's appropriate to just remember that there are a lot of additional expenses that we've had to incur, um, in order to maintain safety and um, the ability to, to, you know, to have kids back in school and have staff in school. So, um, you know, I don't want that to go unnoticed. Um, and I, I appreciate the work that you've done. I know we have some more work to do. Um, the question I have is, um, we, we'd like to, um, and I'm sure we, we have a roll up. We'd like to just look at where some opportunities are, um, to save. That again, um, as you showed on, I think the last slide, if there are other opportunities for savings that we can look at that don't necessarily, um, cut into programming and things like that, we would certainly want to entertain those and, and look at those as we continue the, the process. So.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Um, and, you know, it's a great point. So just to give you, I'll give you a little bit more clarity on what we're doing internally. Um, unfortunately I've been around and the role of superintendent long enough to have gone through several economic ups and downs cycles. So, um, you know, this is not going to be an easy process. As we know, it's never easy to make the kinds of reductions, um, that we need to make if, um, under these circumstances and how we start is, it kind of think about it from, uh, with concentric circles, the classroom being the one right in the middle that we do everything we can to protect, um, from the impact of, of reductions because clearly, um, you know, our, 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 what we do here is, is, is teach kids and we can't do that without, without our teachers and, and, you know, reasonable, um, services and class sizes. So we start on the outer edges, you know, that includes everything um, that we can do that doesn't impact program. Um, and we keep moving in, um, you know, the, we take advantage as much as we can of every single retirement on the, and we do every year. So it's just, that's not a new exercise. Um, but whether or not we replace positions, um, you know, this, the decision lines on whether we decide to replace positions going into next year is just, is clearly different than it has been in the past. There'll be some, likely some positions that we, uh, in a normal year may have considered replacing that we, we just won't be able to and don't want to because clearly we are, you know, we want to make sure that we can um, yeah, get as much, um, efficiency and value out of, of those opportunities as we can, as we work toward the, the, the total reduction that we've been asked to, asked to get to. Um, you know, so it will start with, uh, everything from the central office, uh, and, you know, maintenance operations. You know, we really are, have done such a good job of, of maintaining our buildings and really, um, uh, making a difference with, be, doing some projects that have really, I think, helped a lot. Some of those will have to be curtailed. Um, we're still in the pandemic, so we got to be careful how much, um, how deep we go in some of those areas because we want to make sure our buildings continue to be um, healthy and safe as, as we always would, but, uh, clearly, um, the virus has introduced a whole nother level of cleaning that we have not had to really manage before. Uh, and then we will continue to look at areas of, uh, you know, where can we save in supplies and utilities? Where can we, uh, save and, and, um, delaying certain projects that we might've had in mind that we were going to do, um, program expansion, obviously delays. Um, and we will continue to, you know, work, work our way into, um, those numbers and, and we have done a lot of that work. Um, and to your point, uh, Mr. Corus, we, we will, uh, we'll, we'll bring all those forward to you for your conversation. Uh, ultimately, you know, all this is, is the decision of the school committee. It's our job to provide you with the information you need to make, to make decisions and obviously our professional opinions on, on what we think, um, should be done to, uh, to maintain the quality of the school system. So, uh, again, we'll be, we'll be next week. In fact, we meet, I believe on Tuesday. You'll be seeing the first round of those.
Excellent. Excellent. Thank you, Doctor. And I, I, I appreciate you making the clarification because I think that's important. Again, after the kind of shocking news that, uh, we, we talked about earlier this week that, um, you know, our goal is, is to protect that middle circle as much as we can and, and, you know, the education. And, um, look at areas outside that where we can find savings. So I appreciate that clarification. Uh, any other questions to Dr. Hackett? Okay. Thank you for that, that first draft. And, uh, I know we have a lot of work to do. We're ready to roll our sleeves up and work together to get where we need to, where we need to be. So I believe that, I believe that covers our agenda for this evening. Our next meeting, as Dr. Hackett said, is, is next Tuesday. Um, is that at six thirty?
I'm sorry, I was muted. Um, I would have to check and now I'm sharing my screen. So you'd see my calendar and you don't want to see that.
I don't really want to see.
I don't want to see.
You don't want to see mine?
No, no, and I would just, we did have an executive session on here to, um,
Yes.
It, it, I would be good if we could, if we could do that, there would be no action coming out of that executive session.
Okay. I just wanted to cover the meet, future meeting date.
Yep.
For those that are on, so, so we will be entering into executive session. Uh, we will not be coming back into open session. So we'll go from executive session to adjournment. Um, and we're going to enter executive session to consider the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real property. As the chair declares that an open meeting may have a de- detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the Finance and Operations Subcommittee and ultimately the Braintree School Committee. So I will entertain a motion to enter into executive session.
So moved.
And that's, I'll second that. And Ms. Saros?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. That's approved. Now I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, Ms. Saros?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you. This meeting is adjourned and we will see you in executive session.
Okay. I'll be saying that shortly.
Yeah.
Good night, everybody. Thank you.
Good night.
Bye.